Testing.
Okay, I'll call this July night 2013, 4:30 PM, work session to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three. He's absent. Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Present.
Quorum present.
All right. Have no opening remarks, other than I wanted to start something on the agenda, probably for work sessions, to when a lady or a man gets a new haircut, we want to compliment. So yesterday, we had you with the new haircut looks great, and today Rebecca, look at Rebecca's new haircut. Wonderful. Looks great.
It's very nice that she knows this is great.
Hey, I love women's hair. I don't know what I'm thinking. Okay. Upcoming agenda items. Sure, absolutely.
I just want to say how proud I am at the rollout this morning of our new police car. Police cars and car, at least that we got to see, the unveiling of it. It's a great looking car, and I'm so proud of our police department that's getting ready to hit the streets on July 31st. I think we're going to have just such a first-class police department. We've been working hard, and I'm so proud that they've ramped up in such a record-breaking time, and look forward to seeing them patrolling our streets.
Yes, I'd like to compliment Chief on the colors he chose for the car and just how it looks. It looks nice, professional, new, fresh, efficient. The badges look great. The patches look great. Obviously, you look great tonight. But no, thank you again.
But I didn't get the yellow jacket.
Yeah, we've got Century 21 over here.
Did you get your test drive?
No, no test drive. No, no donuts in the parking lot. Chief did let me push his little horn on his car. Policy statement practice for ordinance readings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you will recall at your meeting in... You will recall at your... Am I on? Okay. Your meeting in June whereby the charter amendment for home rule was presented to you to allow going to two separate readings of ordinances for adoption to one. The concern was, how do we keep the community engaged, and at what point are they engaged? And you all raised the question as to, you know, what's the real purpose of doing this first and foremost? And then, secondly, you know, how do we develop a policy, and what should be the procedure of that? The purpose of doing it is to provide more efficiency in how we move these ordinances forward, because as you know, any upcoming item, such as an ordinance, is first vetted in a work session. We discuss it. The sponsoring department head makes a presentation, and you all hear it, and you then permit the item to move forward to an agenda. When it reaches that council agenda, prior to that council agenda, just as tonight, we go over the upcoming agenda items, as well as what is on the agenda before you that particular evening. So for a second time, we talk about the ordinance. So there are two opportunities to hear reasons for the ordinance. Are there any costs associated with implementing such an ordinance? What is the benefit, et cetera? So you get all of that. Then, it reaches you in the city council agenda as a first reading. Now, at that first reading, there is no action on your part, and there is no comments that can be received by the public. And I think that's where the disconnect has been, because you do want to hear from the public, and many times, they come and they want to make a presentation, or at least make their thoughts known about it. So we discuss that in terms of how does that work with a first and one read only? You know, that would be the only opportunity and chance that the public would have. And again, does somebody miss that opportunity? And you want to keep that open door policy where the public can communicate with you all. So in our conversation and in our discussions, my recommendation, and I've sent to you the policy and procedures for one-read ordinance, and it would follow pretty much exactly like we're doing right now. The ordinance is presented in a work session and vetted. If you all feel like more information is needed, you have that opportunity, and it comes back at a later work session. Or you add additional components to that, that would be part of the body of the ordinance. Then you set and allow for it to move forward to a city council agenda. So that practice still would remain the same. Then it would come, it would be placed on an agenda, and prior to that agenda work session, again, we would have one more opportunity to talk about it. Both of these opportunities of work sessions are just the staff communicating directly with you all. So there is no public engagement there. When it reaches you all in this new scenario of a one-read only, my recommendation would be at that one read, it's presented by the sponsoring department head, or myself, or the city attorney, whatever the case may be. You all hear it. You discuss it amongst yourselves. You have questions of the staff. And then, at that time, you invite the public to speak, and they can make comments on their thoughts and concerns regarding that ordinance. At that point, you would then have a choice. You could take it under advisement and wait for another two weeks for a council meeting. Or you could act on it, because you've already heard from the public, and you've had the opportunity to have public engagement and have the feedback, not only with the public, perhaps asking questions, but your staff being here immediately to answer those questions for you. So in that particular case, you could move forward. You could make adjustments to that ordinance as you would at a second reading right now. That you would, you can move to approve based on the following changes or amendments to the ordinance. So you could do that absent having a second reading. So that would be the opportunity a one-read-only ordinance would provide to you. And again, that would be your third time hearing it, the first time for the public to have comment. If you chose at that time to say it, "We still want to take this under advisement. We'd still like to hear from the public." It could be placed on the following agenda two weeks later, and again, it's heard. So you have an opportunity, whereas before you didn't, in a one-read. The one-read is placed on the agenda for your action, and if you choose not to act, you can take it under advisement, defer it, deny it, or approve it as submitted. But the one-read allows you something different that your first read does not, and that allows for your public to approach and make comments. And it allows you then an opportunity to take the time, if you want it, to further consider their comments, and allow staff to respond and react and provide additional data to you, and bring it back to a following council meeting. So the difference really is, the public gets to approach you sooner than what you are doing currently.
That's the practical effect of it.
Correct.
Okay.
I think what we'd have to do is just a good job of education. Because what I'm afraid of is that people think we're somehow circumventing an opportunity to hear from the public. But, you know, I've been frustrated too with what you're saying, is that we have a first read, and really, we don't get comment. We don't get comment from people. I can also see where there's plenty of times when we're passing a lot of fairly ordinary and mundane, non-controversial items. It kind of would have been nicer if had this in the first month than when we were bringing over all the codes, because it took us endless meetings to bring them over.
And this scenario gives you that prerogative now. It doesn't force you to wait for two readings, where something is, for lack of a better word, routine that you would like to dispense of, so procedurally, the city can continue to move. You could do that. But where matters are sensitive and the public would really like to speak.
Right.
You have that opportunity now to allow them to come forward. And it doesn't mean just because they come forward the first time that that's the end of it.
Right.
If you choose and decide that you want more public input, then what you do is defer it to the following council's meeting, and you allow the public to approach again.
Right, which we've done on a number of issues already.
Right.
If it's coming to us at the work session prior, as I understand it, is there any way to then publish that list of proposed ordinances after that work session, so that if anybody is interested, you know, rather than now that with the agenda coming out typically the Friday before, if we could back up two weeks and say that, you know, at this work session, I don't want to put additional burden on the clerk, but if, you know, just a simple listing of these were discussed at the work session, and they will be on the agenda for whatever the next meeting is, so that people who are interested, who do in fact check the website, which I believe a number of people do, can see that these are upcoming, rather than, you know, the Friday before, Thursday, whenever it hits, they're on the agenda. Because I think that's what my concern was, is that people don't seem to really take notice until it is officially on the agenda.
And I think that's a very good point. I mean, you know, we are...
We can do that, right?
Oh, absolutely. Because right now, and that's part of the missing link, because now the agendas are posted, you know, the work session and the council agenda, and then the follow-up to that. But, you know, we could highlight out of that work session what's coming out of there, and what agenda is it being placed on. It would be, I think, very simple, and between the city clerk's office and communications.
Can we do, is there, I know it asks us this before. Where else is this being done this way? Will we be the first to do it this way?
No. Several of the new cities are doing that, and many of the traditional cities.
What criticisms of any have you heard? For, I mean, every city might do it procedurally different, but have you heard, have you heard any criticism about what that?
No, I haven't personally. I've not heard of any at all. I think, you know, what is subject to criticism is to not allow the public to be engaged.
Right.
You know, to have a first read and not invite the public to speak truly usurps their ability to communicate with you. And I think many do want the opportunity to present at the podium, and we've seen it before. Comments are made, and it does allow you to pause, to say, "Well, wait a minute. Maybe we do need to consider this further," or direct staff to say, "We need additional information before we act." And I think that's always good, you know, when that kind of information comes forward or that request is made.
Can we ask Megan any questions about that?
Yeah.
Megan? Do you have any opinion about this? You don't? Okay.
You know, if you look at it, and it's the way the cab and all the other traditional, as Marie said, all the traditional, you know, most of theirs are first read. I think what it does is it puts the burden or responsibility on the council to try to better understand which ones may need to be pulled, or which ones may need to be vetted, and, you know, figure out at that point. But if we stick to this two weeks ahead notice, and don't end up with a bunch of, you know, last-minute, I mean, where this is going to break apart is where we've had, particularly from Legal and some of the others, where they've dropped things in, you know, at the last minute, because there's a need, you know. And I understand that there are going to be, quote, "emergencies," but to the extent we can, we can really hold to that two-week period to allow us time to vet it, you know, first of all, publish it, second of all, allow us time to talk to folks to see if this is an issue, or if it's a, if it's a pass-through, then I think that would be, that would be sort of the critical, which is giving us that time to get a pulse before we're asked to vote on it.
Especially in your startup year. Everything is new. Absolutely everything. And you do want to hear from your public, and you do want to have that opportunity, and you want time yourself to understand the...
Can we have this written down, so that we can publish the reason for it? Because I think it's kind of important to, you know, so maybe if we could publish the reason behind this, so that people don't think there's some nefarious purpose behind it.
And I'll work with Megan. I mean, we can take this policy and procedure statement, if this is what you all agree to. And then, you know, just give the background for it as to why. I mean, this is not, this is not being suggested, or in any way recommended to railroad anything to move it through. It's to give your public an opportunity to speak earlier than from what you're hearing now.
All right, yes, please publish that.
Yes.
Gebbia?
Say yes. Okay. I had some concerns about this at the very get-go. And I think one of the big issues is that with the two-read, we took a vote on the first go. And that was setting the bar for where we were. And that's what, that's what got a lot of the people who had real interest in it saying, "Hey, we may pay attention to this, because if it goes through the second read, it's going to pass." It was like, what flew, what tripped the switch?
We don't take action on the first read.
And I was going to mention that, I think what Mr. Gebbia is trying to refer to is that the first read has no action, and it moves forward, and automatically, it goes to a second read. And I think the public was thinking, "This is a done deal. What's happening here?"
Unless we objected, deferred it, et cetera. Thank you for the clarification. That is what I meant. So your comment here is that it gives the residents two opportunities to confront us now on comments that would be coming during the work session, and I'm...
No, not during the work session, because the work session is an opportunity for staff to be able to present to you the items that are upcoming, and also what's on the agenda immediately facing you for that council evening. Also, the reason we don't take public comments is because it could usurp those that would like to come to the scheduled city council meeting, where they want to make a presentation, and they may miss that opportunity. So we don't want to leave anybody out, and so that the forum for which the public engages with the council is in a council meeting.
Okay, I think we're doing a much better job in our communications, thanks to Megan. So, and I do agree with the council here, I think it's very important that we make sure we get it out and understood. We'd like to have a copy, as Mayor has requested. And as long as it remains flexible for us to change as we go down the road, I think we're fine.
Well, and it does, it gives you that prerogative right now. I mean, again, depending on the matter, you could take it to the first read, invite the public to speak, hear them, hear your staff, and make a decision, and allow that matter to be dispensed with. Or to reserve time, take it under advisement, and then publish it on the next council agenda, and then take action there.
Yeah, again, I think that the key component is the previous work session, and getting ordinances brought forward at that period, or at that point, so that we do have sufficient time. You know, but again, so many of the things, zoning and those types of things, have already been vetted once or twice in a public hearing, so there's, you know, the first and second read. For new ordinances or things we haven't seen, then to bring them forward, so that we can, because then it, the burden falls on the council to figure out what needs to be.
We can work certainly with, first and foremost, the city clerk's office and communications on the website, and maybe there's a new tab, or there's something that's upcoming items, and it just lists whatever the title of the ordinance is and a date. You know, and at least then the public's notified and noticed that, okay, it's coming up for August the 8th. We know that. We can track it.
You know, ultimately, I think the burden is going to be on us, to both be responsive and to the community when there needs to be more discussion. And I suspect the critics would say, "There's a lot of, 'Well, just trust me.'" Well, there is, there is a degree of that. So, you know, I take that as a heavy burden of responsibility, and I hope people have seen that we've been very methodical about our decisions. You know, watch what we do. You know, I hope we're building a track record of being deliberative and putting off things when we feel like we need more information, or want to have more public input. But I do like the idea of us being a little bit more nimble. I think our whole goal has been to sort of streamline some of the processes of government, and when we need to make a decision and get answers back, whether it's on an IGA, or some other ordinance that might affect a business dealing. I can see where, you know, it would be advantageous to be able to get a speedier decision.
Thank you, Marie.
Yes, thank you.
Century Center Annexation Report.
Yes. Just wanted to give you a briefing on what is upcoming. As you know, we did receive an application for a request for annexation of just slightly over 100 acres. It's 100.299, I believe. It is the Century Center development, but not all of it. It's just the major portion of it. That application has been submitted formally to the city. It does meet the requirements of the annexation law. From there, there is a requirement that we notify the county, and we have, and we've just today received a response from the GIS Department of the County, which handles responses for the, any annexations from the cities. And basically, their response was that they've identified the property, and they don't have any improvements on the property that belong to the county, except for or including any easements. And those easements would be water and sewer lines that are public. So with that, there is no objection that we've received from the county.
That's good.
And the director of GIS has told us that he is responsible, his agency or his department is responsible for the review of any annexation requests. So we have met that requirement by law, and we have now received a response. This item is scheduled for the Planning Commission, and I might mention here that this is a two-part application. It's an annexation with a rezoning. The purview of the Planning Commission is only to review and recommend on rezoning, so they are not acting on the annexation. However, they will understand that this is part and parcel. But they have to act on the rezoning of the property, which they will make a recommendation on July the 18th at their hearing. It will come before the mayor and council on July the 22nd for a public hearing, which will then consider both the annexation and the rezoning. You will receive a recommendation from staff on the rezoning from the Community Development Department, and then you will receive that along with the Planning Commission's recommendation on the rezoning portion. And then, of course, from myself, you will receive the recommendation regarding annexation from the standpoint of, can we offer and provide services? So that will be coming to you July the 22nd, and then that will be a first read. We scheduled it for a first read and a second read, because we didn't know the outcome of the charter amendment. July the 23rd is your regularly scheduled council meeting, and it will be on your council's agenda. So we'll have a work session again on the 23rd, and you'll hear about this again, and you'll hear about it in a work session leading up for the 22nd as well.
I'd like to, at some point, direct Legal or staff to contact the City of Shamblie and have a sort of meeting with them before we vote on this.
Absolutely.
Just to go over some things. We talked to them informally, separately and informally, but I'd like to do that before we vote on it.
Okay, so we'll do that before the 22nd?
Yes.
Do you want that before the 18th?
What was the date of the Planning Commission?
18th, July 18th.
It doesn't necessarily have to be before, maybe if it can be before 18th, that's great, I think. But is there any comment from y'all up here on that?
Well, that's pretty quick.
Well, it is, right. From when?
From the 12th and 17th.
Well, let's have it after the 18th.
Right, okay.
Jim?
What would you do in the morning of the 22nd?
We could. I'm not opposed to that. You know, I'd probably also be interested in seeing what information, you know, they've requested information from us. I think we need to also ask what financial information they may have available, reports and analysis and studies for their, you know, I know Rebecca's done a little bit poking around, but I'd like to do an FOI.
Okay.
On all financial data that they've prepared for the analysis, so that we can go in eyes wide open.
Just to let you know, I did check with the City of Shamblie, both with the clerk and the interim city manager, to see if in fact a feasibility study had been done. It's all Carl Vincent often does, these sorts of things. It did one on the previous annexation, when Shamblie took in Huntley Hills and a good piece of Peachtree Industrial. I was told that they had not done a formal study, per se. Whether they've done any, crunched any numbers internally, their city manager wasn't aware of it. So I'm not aware of anyone. I'd be interested in seeing that information as well.
Well, it would be also, in addition to, and we could ask for this, in addition to the financial side of it, it's also serviceability, you know, public safety, fire, I mean, all of those services that they perform and provide, whether it be that they do that themselves, or that they contract with the county or other agencies to provide trash service, all of that.
How would we go about meeting with them? Would it have to be a, I mean, we couldn't all do it out, yes? I mean, would that be a public hearing, or I mean...
Well, it would be a notice that, I mean, it could be a work session.
If we wanted all of us to be together?
Right. If both clerks would have to give notice to the public that we have a quorum present on both sides.
Right. Meet on neutral, like on the borderline or something?
Do you think that a meeting that large would be productive? Or do you think it really needs to be more you and...
Yeah, something like that.
Clarkston and a couple of key staff to... Because I'm not sure that, you know, we're going to get into Sharks and Jets if it ends up being, you know, rumbling across Clermont Road.
Maybe me and a council member, and then them and a council member.
But, yeah, I would suggest that you limit the attendance, not to try to keep anybody out, but just simply make it a more productive meeting.
Right. Just explore that, whatever form it could take, who could be there, if it's, we just want to reach out to them, and before we vote on it, just to...
But just to clarify, Marie, it's correct that, is it correct that Highwoods and the Century Center people came to us? We neither solicited nor...
Correct. Jim Piquetta, who is the vice president for Highwoods, which is the publicly traded company that owns a good bit of the property in Century Center, and also holds ground leases in Century Center, along with Emily Crum, who is the owner of quite a bit of the property in Century Center with ground leases. Her representative, her executress, her niece, Suzanne Harper, were all in agreement to this, that they approached us, they wanted to annex. In fact, the initial meeting was with Mr. Piquetta, that he wanted to come into Brookhaven. And there were a number of meetings following that first initial request.
And we verified that they had met the requirement, the law that allows 100% of property owners to petition for annexation.
Yes, working with our city attorney, Lenny. Yes, absolutely.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about this?
Yeah, I am in favor of having this meeting. They are our neighbor. We need to respect that. There are citizens that have a lot of concerns on this. We need to be making the effort to have an open and candid view on this from a regional standpoint. It's incumbent upon us to do that. I would be proactive, as we've discussed earlier, and Bonnie, that we look to put some numbers together on what the impact is from this decision in those areas that will be affected, because there are assumptions being made, and there's comments being made that I don't know if they have any validation. And apparently, if there's no Vincent report, or any other substantiation, it's going to be coming upon us to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Right, and I thank you for that. I've already been working with Ms. Klein on that. She's given me some projections, as well as our police chief, Mr. Andura. He's taken a look at that. So we're looking at those services that we provide in-house, as well as our intergovernmental agreements with the county, such as fire safety, such as animal control. All of those are being addressed.
Now, Ms. Mayor, I might suggest that if this meeting does come off, and it's principally between you and the mayor of Shamblie, that everything be put on the table, and what other options there may be, not just A or B.
Correct. And that's, I think that's a, that's a good idea. It shouldn't be an all-or-nothing approach to anything on this issue. So I just think it's, it's good for business to, I mean, it has come out, and we received an application. We know that some folks who are there were upset about it. Some folks that live in the area to be possibly annexed by Shamblie were upset. Some folks were in the area to be annexed by Shamblie, were happy that we might consider taking them in at some point. So there's a lot of different interests in this. More information is always better, in my mind. So we'll, I have a good relationship with the mayor over there, so we'll, we'll talk about it.
And also, if we haven't already, I know they're posting on the property, but if we can post the dates and times of the public hearings on our website. I know I've had requests from several folks about when they can address the council on those matters, and both sides of the line. So if we can get those up as soon as they're possible, then we have an opportunity to direct them to the website for additional information.
Okay, we can do that.
And also, we just need to be prepared, you know, for those hearings to expect a crowd, and, you know, probably allow additional time, and make sure that nobody goes away feeling like they've been short-changed.
Are you in a position to tell us a little bit more about the zoning change that's coming in?
Yes, absolutely. The property, because it is a mixed-use development right now, predominantly office, institutional uses, there are some ancillary retail that support the commercial, well, the office space that's located in the park right now, including a hotel. the office space that's located in the park right now, including a hotel. And looking at the county zoning and discussions with the applicants, what we found was, in order for them to develop their property, they had to seek a number of special land use permits to do that. So we looked at the existing environment, the built environment that they have, as well as their proposed future development for the still undeveloped parcels that make up Century Center, and determined that the city's zoning classification of PC3 would be most appropriate for that project. So that is what is being analyzed now by the Community Development Director and preparing a report based on that.
And PC3, remind me, is that planned community or pedestrian community?
Pedestrian community.
And that provides for mixed use?
Correct.
I know that's what the Brookley development in my district is right now. So it allows for a mixed use?
Yes, because the applicant, in their future plans for the development, are looking at creating a town center in the center of their project, as well as offering the opportunity for another residential component, a standalone residential component as well for their project. And again, these are, on the undeveloped parcels, a listing of possible future uses, which the Planning Department's going to analyze. And in their analysis, will make recommendations on what will be appropriate. But for all of those uses, in particular, not just the future so much, but the built environment right now, as to what zoning classification best fits what they're doing.
So PC3 allows for residential, commercial?
Office, all-in-one building, you know, together. And again, it supports the pedestrian component of that, so that you can walk to these amenities. It does allow for and look to, you know, open space, so we want to see that. They do have the creek that runs through their property and they have maintained it as an open space component. And there's been some discussion about opening that up a little bit more with trails.
If we receive sufficient information to understand where the slups are, what properties, are they doing it sort of on a building-by-building basis? Or are there portions where there's two or three, how is that? Because I know it's OD and LNI.
Correct. What my understanding is, is that the majority of the buildings they have came through with a slump, including signs.
And if we, if they provided, or has Decap provided information about what conditions?
We've asked for that. I know Susan is working on that. That's something she is reviewing. I don't know if it's been formally asked. I know it's on her list.
And maybe in one of those 17 boxes we picked up from the cabinet?
Right, to understand what those conditions are.
It seems like the applicant should have those.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not looking, you know...
No, no, you're making a very good point. Because, one, if there were promises made to the community, we want to be sure that they're kept. So we do need to know what those are.
And also, if the county made, you know, I mean, if they committed to certain things that may have an impact financially, we need to understand it also. I mean, you know, a question in my mind is providing police service to what is essentially a private community.
Correct.
You know, because the roads are not dedicated at this time. I know that they've been doing it, but there's got to be something worked out with that. And, you know, is that part of what they, did they commit to providing private security as part of their slump? I don't know. So, you know, if it seems like...
We'll definitely research that.
And it should be just a three or four page for each one.
Exactly, and they should have every one of those. And they just recently went through one on a sign, I know, a few months ago. So we'll make sure that that's captured. And I know that Ms. Cannon is working on all of that.
All right, well, thank you. Any other agenda items?
Not for upcoming.
All right. Pre-regular meeting agenda review.
Oh, one more thing. If possible, when staff sends their review to the Planning Commission, can they also copy us on that so we have a little?
Yes.
Pre-notice?
Now, remember, it'll just be the rezoning component.
That's fine, you know, that in my mind is the bigger component.
Well, it is.
Yeah, so, and also, along those same lines, and I know we've asked for it, but if we could get on the distribution list for regular Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, I don't know, we're not receiving those. And, you know, I mean, just so that we, and to take it even more further, I don't know if it's possible, I've had calls, once the sign goes up, of what's going on and that, you know, there's, that period is before. I mean, if we could even get a copy of the application?
Right.
When the sign goes up, so that we're at least aware of it, you know, sort of a two-step process. One is when the sign goes up for the BZA or the Planning Commission. And I'm just looking for a copy of the application. I know staff hasn't prepared analysis or whatever. I just, I would, I'd like to understand, you know, who's applying and what the basic is, so that if somebody calls or emails, I at least have an understanding that it hit. Because oftentimes, it's in a part of the district that I'm not frequenting, so I don't know the signs up until I get a call from a neighbor. But if we could get that and then subsequently, if we could get the analysis for the BZA and the Planning Commission at the time that's sent to those boards, that would be useful.
Those, and I'll check with Ms. Cannon on her procedures. I know she does post all of that on the web. The analysis is there. So she could alert you all that it's there. From the standpoint of getting a copy of the application, we'll work on that to...
Again, I mean, if it's just a simple scan and...
Yeah, I'm thinking that. Sometimes these applications are quite thick. Are you wanting all of it? Are you asking calls there?
Well, I think what he's asking is, we see these signs go up all over the city. And when somebody says, they're going to call us, what is this about?
Yeah, right.
We would just like to know, a paragraph?
Application? Yeah, okay, we'll do that.
Maybe just the first page or what it's...
Absolutely. Because you want to know who the applicant is, what they're asking for, the zoning and...
Is it a chemical factory or a restaurant?
We've had a couple cases where the application and the sign haven't matched. So, you know, I've gotten some frantic calls and the application said one thing and then the sign said something dramatically different. So, you know, I was scrambling a little bit trying to...
Okay.
One of the ideas generated here is to, because our areas are so tightly intertwined along areas, it could be a sign in Jim's district that I'm getting calls on.
Sure.
So perhaps, like, once every two weeks, once every week, whatever makes sense, is a quick recap for all of us of what the activities are. Pre-notifications from Susan, and then if we want to pursue it further with you, at least we know the gist of it.
Yeah, what I'm thinking right now, and if you'll allow me just to discuss it with her, she's working on some planning analyses right now. That's why she's not here. She'll be here very soon. But I'm wondering, you know, she has specific deadline dates for filing, that maybe once she receives those applications, she can just give you a quick list. This is what's been filed, and then stay tuned. And if you're, you know, interested, you may then want to come in and look at it yourself as to what's been filed this weekend.
We just need prior communications.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pretty loud and clear.
The key is sometime prior to the sign going up.
Yeah, sure.
So...
But it might be a good time, too, at her deadline, because that's a good point for her to know, okay, this is what's received and it's coming up for this agenda. I think that will be helpful. And then when the sign does go up, you'll just look back at your list. We'll work on a way to communicate that for you.
Rebecca, did you have something?
I was just going to share with you something, a piece of information I found kind of interesting in a, sort of a late-night Google that I did. I was curious about Emily Fisher Crum, who owns the ground leases of most of Century Center. We had heard that the Crum family owned most of that land. And so I thought, gosh, this is kind of like the Spruill family up in Dunwoodie. So I tried to do a little bit of research. What I found, wasn't a whole lot about the Crum family so much, but I did find a review of a book, a book that was written by the Mercer University Press, which commemorates her, because she apparently, in the very recent past, has agreed to donate the money generated from these ground leases to split between Mercer University and LaGrange College. And so when you see her listed as a philanthropist, she's quite the philanthropist. I mean, what a great legacy and what a great family and what a smart woman to have kept the ground leases.
Absolutely.
I'm very impressed, yeah.
From Mr. Piquetta, just in his conversations with me, is that, you know, she's very fond of the property. She has childhood memories there. Her father grew crops on the property. She would run and hide and climb trees and even remarked that all of the roads leading to the land, to the farm, which was her mother's, it came from her mother's side, it was not her husband's, it came from her mother's side of the family, that all roads leading to the property were dirt and when it rained, you couldn't get out, you got stuck. So it must have just been...
Somebody needs to capture that. I know she's elderly. The last recent pictures that were, at least were on the web, were her receiving an award at the Capital City Club. And it was, I think, in honor of her contribution to these, to the universities. But it also talked about that her husband was a graduate of Georgia Tech and had been recently been hired by the Callaway family to start designing some gardens for them south of here. And then Pearl Harbor hit. And he was inducted into the Navy and then sent over to Pearl Harbor as an engineer to help rebuild Pearl Harbor. So there's pictures of them living in Hawaii for a number of years. So they've got a very interesting history. I was trying to find out if it's Emily Fisher Crum. You know, Fisher Mansion is just up the road on Shambly Dunwoodie and has quite a history as well. Dr. Fisher was one of the founders of Crawford Lawn. And the developer there preserved that mansion. Anyway, as we get going on our history of Brookhaven, we need to capture all this, because we've got great history and great stories to tell.
Thank you, Rebecca. Yes, I appreciate it.
Sorry, but it's just so interesting.
It'll be a test at the end of the day.
For a history major, I was bearing... Review the agenda.
We are, yeah, reviewing the regular agenda for this meeting. As you know, you do have, as your first item of business under Old Business, is the deliberation of the millage rate and setting the millage rate. You've had four public hearings.
Where's the agenda on that?
And that is...
Page eight? Got it. Or it's after page seven?
Got it.
And I didn't mean to jump over to the Old Business right away. We will have some swearing in of officers, a number of officers, and then on the consent agenda are the minutes from previous meetings. Following the setting of the millage rate, will be an ordinance actually to establish that ad valorem tax rate for the city. And that is considered your second read yesterday. You did have a first read and there was mention made of a rate amount. Item number three will be the Charter Amendment for the one-read-only ordinances. And then followed by items four and five, the IGAs on police services and parks and recs. And I will recommend to you that you defer this. Unfortunately, we did not receive any comments or response to our offer to the county. Last item under Old Business is a resolution providing for the establishment of stormwater service fee rates. And we were, we had that on the agenda yesterday and we asked that you defer it, so that the county today in their hearing, they had it on their agenda to consider. And my understanding is they deferred it until next Tuesday, I believe this is. Is that correct?
But one of the items...
Go ahead, Richard, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Move the bottom. I think right there. There you go. It's on. Yes.
They did defer it, but the Public Works Subcommittee did unanimously vote to recommend it for approval to increase it to $60. So the feeling among our contacts there was that because of the unanimous vote by the Subcommittee, that it was expected to pass next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Also, there was, I don't know if we want to bring up, there was the one change, the typo, that as we adopt the resolution, we need to have the item that Commissioner Hyer pointed out yesterday with the factor for the multifamily, that's right now written in the R and 7.7, that's actually...
That's okay.
It's actually supposed to be 0.5 to parallel Dunwoodie's RT, as always, Decap County's current. So we will need to make that as a...
You probably need to defer it another week to make sure we get the wording right.
Is it, well...
Well, we could, the only problem...
If they're not doing it until next week, we can do the same, I would think.
Well, we don't have a meeting next week. Our next meeting is the 23rd or the 22nd if we have a special call.
I believe they're going to take it up on the 15th, is there a...
16th.
16th, right.
We could just do it with an amendment to the motion, couldn't we?
Pardon me?
For that one change, you have a technical amendment, just change that one number from 0.7, 0.5.
Right.
It's our intent, through discussions that Ms. Klein has had with the Tax Assessor's Office, that we will be giving the county notice as to what our millage rate is and then any additional assessments or fees. So this is really your...
Why don't we have her just say, have tell Decap that to set ours, whatever theirs is set at?
We need, I think, and Lenny might have to answer this, I think we need an extra resolution from the council with the rate in it to pass on to...
The rate would be whatever the cab's rate would be.
We need the number of that.
Yeah, okay.
Next commissioner is going to need the number of that. He is going to be chartering.
And I suspect we may be on a different deadline than the county commission.
Right.
And we have just, once we set the rate, we have a little work we have to do on our end to get, to Bonnie, the file to get to the county with the rate in there.
Richard, I know you all are recommending the increase, but if we didn't pass it, what would be the consequences of that?
Well, the other option, of course, is you could pass at the current rate, which is the $48.00 or $4.00 per month, would be the way it would read. The consequences is how much revenue you're going to generate this first year. And the difference is about, I think faced on what we've seen, the difference is about a $400,000, $400,000 to $500,000 difference between the 40, I think it's about 1.55 million at the $60 and about 1.2 million at the $48 is what we're looking at. We don't have the exact number.
So what council passed, they're saying they want the $60 rate? What was the name of that council?
The Dunwoodie, it's the Public Works Subcommittee of the Decap County Commission, which I believe they have commissioners that serve as subcommittees to the county commission as a whole. So it was actual commissioners voting. I don't know whether it's two members or three members on the Subcommittee. I'm assuming three out of the six on the Subcommittee, but I'm not sure.
All right.
I might mention this, too, just to give you something to think about, if there is a hesitation on the dollar amount right now, because we don't know what, you know, Decap County's doing. And I know you all have this policy that you want to be equal to or better than Decap County. Because you're brand new, you get the opportunity to do a budget three times your first year. And I've discussed with many of you that we'll be coming back in October with the 2014 budget. These, this fee that you're setting is for the 2013 collection and for improvements that we would be working on, repairs and maintenance.
This year?
For this year. So you have an opportunity to adjust it again, and I'm confident that we would be coming back to you. If you go with the current rate, that for at least 2014, we would ask you to reconsider, especially if the county has increased their rate. I know that Richard spent a lot of time looking at the improvements, and I've mentioned this to you before, we've received an inventory of all of the assets and a close condition of those assets. And there are more projects out there cost-wise than what the collection rate will allow us to address. So at the $60 rate or at the $48 rate, we're not going to be able to chisel away at a lot. You know, we will be coming back to you with the capital improvement plan, and we're going to be looking at that in our stormwater utility program, how we're going to set priorities, which you all will make those decisions. You'll get the recommendation from staff, but you'll have to make decisions and the money's not going to go that far. But if you're looking at just current standards, current fees, you've got 2013 to address. And then knowing that, we'll come back to you when we start the 2014 in October.
I'd like to hear from the public, I mean, and we have, this has been on the agenda several times, and I don't know if we have any comments on it. And I want to know if Bonnie could just ask, when Decap needs to have that number? I know they need their millage rate, but if they're deferring their stormwater...
I don't know, their schedule's been changed, so I'll ask them tomorrow.
If you could please find out. That way, folks can weigh in on it. I mean, it is a huge need. I know it's been neglected. And I've done what he found, a lot of problems. What is their rate, 62 or a little bit higher than 66?
96, they doubled the rate.
69, no, 69.
69?
Last year was 96, but they may have changed it.
It's 69. It's 69, knowledge. Okay. The tax bill I looked at was about anything around- They may have had, well-
We don't dislike that.
I thought I remember here is 69 last year, but they-
69, I don't think they've raised it this year. I know last year they raised, I think last year or even the year before, they raised it to 69. Since they raised it that initial time, they have not adjusted it since.
One other point too, for, just for your consideration and understanding of where we are with this anticipated fund. If it's $48, whatever the amount is, 1.2 million or maybe it's $1.6 million, once that determination is made and then the county assesses for that, there's going to be what they're calling a truing up because they have been performing from January until now, until we take this over. So they're going to look at being reimbursed for work that they perform. Now thankfully, Richard has kept up with all the work that we have done because there's been a lot of work attended to in response to the citizens that truly our stormwater utility matters. So whatever the rate is, we're not going to be able to get the full amount because the county is going to seek reimbursement out of that fund. We're going to be looking at getting reimbursed of what we've done. And any reimbursement of what we've done is going to come out of that utility fee. So 1.2 or 1.8 million is not going to be the full amount that we work with this year because we've already been performing.
You know, I've heard people refer to taking over the stormwater system as the big scary because it's mostly out of sight. You know, it's underground. I'm disturbed by this report that you gave us of their assessment of how many high priority items there are and that there's basically, we've got about an eight-year backlog even collecting, is that at the current amount or the higher amount?
I think that's the current amount. I had estimated out of a $1.5 million budget, that about the most you could spend on capital projects, which is improvement of the existing system, is about a million a year. You have for other items such as routine maintenance and other things, you have to, that's where the $500,000, about a third of your budget has to go to that. And two-thirds towards capital projects, although you can also build a reserve as well for emergencies.
I mean, in my mind, what we have to weigh is a dollar a month increase to each household, which I understand is $12 a year. On the other hand, if your street caves in or the bridge falls out or we have some catastrophic failure, and we've had some big ones in Dunwood and Brookhaven. Yeah. Shame on us if we don't have the resources.
But I also think we need, you know, I don't disagree, but realistically, what do we anticipate doing this year? We're going to take over, I understand from a constituent that they've been told, we're going to take over the stormwater in September. You know, we're going to do an analysis, which is September, October. We're going to have one month of projects. I mean, realistically, I guess, I don't mind raising it, but I want some, I'd like to see some real net effect early on.
Can I answer? We're looking at the budget.
Yes, you may answer.
As part of the budget amendment, we are looking, we are, this will be part of the budget amendment about how we allocate, because this is going to be revenue, either rate it'd be revenue that we'll have to allocate this year. From assuming the September 1st date, which is the tentative date, I think we've been talking about, we would have to, we probably won't perform any, that's like capital projects this year, other than maybe emergency reactive type. So we'd have to have emergency reactive. We have, but we're getting calls already. Right now, we're deferring them back to DeKalb County. Like Ms. Garrett said, we have to pay DeKalb County for those repairs that we are referring to them. And there's been more of late, there's been quite a few. I know we even got a couple in today that we're, that we've passed on to the county to look at. So that, and then we'll do just, you know, some routine maintenance, a lot of it will go to building a reserve fund. A lot of the money this year will go to build the reserve fund, so we have a reserve built up to address emergency needs going next year and to start from a cash flow standpoint to be able to address capital needs going into next year.
Just to add a point to Mr. Iyer's comments, the first priority is before we physically go out there and start addressing or prioritizing anything, because nothing's going to be prioritized until the mayor and council sign off on that. That's first and foremost. And you won't be able to do that until the stormwater utility plan is presented to you. That is, that is the first thing that we're going to do. We have 75% of it already with the inventory and the conditions of the assets, but Richard's team is going to have to finish the plan and provide the narrative that wraps all of that around to identify, you know, those conditions. And some of those conditions of assets are going to require more investigation because this was a cursory review by the county, not what we'd really like to see in what I would call a complete stormwater utility plan. So some of those monies that will be collected will go to finishing that plan or at least providing funds to do a more in-depth review. So the plan is looking at September as our launch date to start the stormwater utility plan. Get that prepared and ready and come to you probably in October or November with a plan for you to review and approve.
What is this paid? Is it part of the water bill or is it part of the-
No, it's all the tax bill.
Line out of the tax bill.
Right. So we won't, we don't get that until the tax dollars come in. So, and what Richard's talking about, and he and I have had this conversation, is as much as we can hold on to after this first collection, minus what the county is owed, minus what we get reimbursed, we're going to hold on to that and use that as our startup fund for 2014. But unfortunately, it can't really go to a proactive stance. It's going to have to go to reactive, taking care of emergencies. However, there will be, for your consideration, this priority list of the capital improvement projects that will have to be addressed, whether that's over three or five or whatever period of time, at least over a five-year period of time, a short-term plan that Richard will be presenting to you.
One last question, Richard. On that priority list we got, is there a GIS map that marks where these problem areas are out of the several hundred we saw, thousand we saw?
Yes. And we could actually, I mean, we have, we've worked with our GIS department with the data, and I think we've actually internally have produced a map. We actually have a little widget where we can, I can even pull it up on my iPad, I think, where I can look at the assets. But we can produce it, we can get a map produced that shows that. That'll be part of our report.
Is it only problems or is it the entire stormwater?
We have the entire system, but because of the priorities, and with the GIS has the capability of color coding the system based on-
The information we're looking at.
The information we have, so we could do a color-coded map based on the priorities.
Is there a color-coded intensity level for, hey, this is a big-
Black Doppler.
It should be, I mean, you know, this is a dangerous one. You know, I'm sure you might have a little culvert off in the woods somewhere, and you might have one that's under a road that might have the same high priority, but one might be much more impactful.
We'd have to work with our GIS to do that level of detail. Right now, I mean, it's easy to do a map that's, they've gotten categorized as high priority, medium priority, low priority, and they've got two or three other categories in there. That's an easy map to do. Doing another level of analysis, we would probably have to, we could work with our GIS to develop that. But definitely anything under a road is a higher priority than, or anything that affects a private, especially a structure, a house or a building, is going to be higher priority than something that's, like you say, is going through an undeveloped lot or through the woods. Anything that can do road damage or property damage is definitely a higher priority for us to fix.
Is that how they determine the priority, whether it was on an essential asset or was it, I mean, you might have a very damaged one in an undeveloped lot, you might have one just as damaged, but did they, is that how they-
That's how we would do it. The methodology we would approach is within those high priority ones, which ones are going to have, which ones would damage the, are on an asset that could be damaged or a high-dollar damage.
That's how you would do it. Do you know if that's how they did it?
They didn't, they just categorized them as priority one, two, three, based on the actual condition. They didn't get to the level of doing it based on, you know, breaking those priority one ones into a priority list itself. And that's what we were, that's the 25% that Marie was talking about us doing.
Just help me understand real quick, the money that's collected on the tax bill, which I guess gets collected in, is it August and November when the, okay. So that money is used for 2014?
Thirteen.
Thirteen or fourteen?
It's, well, the money, the stormwater utility is an enterprise fund, so it's a separate account. All this money's kept in a separate account. And being an enterprise fund, unlike general fund money, this money can carry forward from year to year. So you can carry a balance forward. So any money that we collect in 2013, it is 2013 revenue, but if it's not spent this year, it basically carries over and can be budgeted to be spent in 2014 or future years.
Michael, with the city our size and the infrastructure we have, what do you think is a reasonable reserve that we should be carrying?
I think-
I'm sorry.
I think we were looking at, I know, and my experience is from when we set this up in Dunwoodie, went through the same process in Dunwoodie when we worked there, and not necessarily to compare, but they have a similar age system. I think we had looked at getting, and they're about the same size, their first year collection was about 1.2 million for the stormwater utility. I think our goal there was to set up about a 50% reserve of annual. So the initial goal there, and they did it over a three-year period where they set aside $200,000 a year for the first three years into a reserve, emergency reserve fund. The way we're looking at it, where we're taking over mid-year, we actually have the ability probably to put that much, at least that much into a reserve fund this first year. And so we can build up our reserve fund, because even with setting the priorities, sometimes because of storms or floods, things happen and we have unexpected things that we have to address.
So what, 1.2 million, it's about a third of the year left. It's about $300,000 to $400,000 after adjustments. Now, that money also is to be used for reactive situations because we're going to have responsibility at that time, right?
Right. If something comes in that we deem needs to be fixed right away, whether it's a collapsing pipe or even a structure or a catch basin top, we'll have to do reactive-type maintenance services. We won't necessarily do budget and start our proactive maintenance. As a part of this money going to 2014 and beyond, will be a proactive maintenance plan to keep the system up to, you know, where we're cleaning out pipes, cleaning out structures to make sure the system stays in good condition. But we won't start that until 2014, but we will have to do reactive maintenance when problems arise.
Well, either at the 1.2 or the 1.55, with the number of high priorities that we have, it's going to be a struggle to probably get that reserve going.
It may be. I don't expect that we'll spend, even at the 1.2, I mean, we won't, we're not expecting to spend all of that this year. We haven't gone through and done the detailed budget yet.
I understand.
But, you know, the difference between the 1.2 and the 1.5 might be, that difference will almost all go into reserves. I mean, we could handle what we need this year at the 1.2, it's just how much reserves and money we're getting set up for future capital needs going into next year.
Got you.
All right. So help me to understand. So we, we all paid the $48 fee on last year's tax bill. That's why I was asking about whether it's a fiscal year or what, because I'm not sure why we're having to reimburse DeKalb when we paid them.
They, because it's budgeted in the fiscal-
Kind of like a parks argument.
Yeah. It, because it was budgeted, the money on the 2012 tax bills was, went to DeKalb as 2012 revenue, they would have budgeted it in 2012.
They advanced the money and paid themselves back when they collected it, the tax collection.
Because it's on a, it's in a budget. So like we do with the property taxes, it's similar. So they, so basically, the money that they collected-
So they're paying in arrears, really?
Arrears, right. And so because they've been maintaining or will maintain the system for eight months in 2013, we'll have to pay them for, but we're going to pay them, they're not doing active maintenance on the system. They're not out there cleaning pipes unless we go out there. So all they've done is reactive stuff. So we know the list, we have a pretty good idea, and we'll work with them to finalize that list. So we'll know an exact cost. Even at the time we do the budget amendment, we'll know, we should know a pretty good cost of what DeKalb's costs are going to be that we'll have to reimburse out of that whatever amount we're going to collect this year.
But that enterprise fund money is, that account's pretty much spent? Is that what you're finding?
Pretty much with DeKalb County, I mean, because they, they're pretty much, they're looking at raising it because they're, they're not collecting enough money to even meet their needs. So they pretty much are spending it 100% every year without, except for what they're keeping for reserves.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was going to say, Kevin, I guess part of the key that, and I know, having paid DeKalb stormwater fees on a commercial property, they, part of what we need to do is make sure that we have gone and looked at all of our commercial properties and have most effectively analyzed, you know, what they are and collecting fees. But along those same lines, I'm going to come back to the discussion I had yesterday, even with the point five versus the point seven, I think we're overcharging our multifamily units, particularly as we go higher, the high-rise in some of these. But I think somehow we need to look at that, if not this year, next, because even at point five, you know, again, I'll go back to the example I used of the Hines, it's, that's 110 credits or 110 residential equivalency, REUs or whatever it is, versus 43, 45 for a traditional commercial property of the same size. So, you know, I would hope that at some point, we reevaluate that formula for the multifamily because we are going to be going higher wherever we redevelop, and that's going to have a larger impact on those units going forward.
Joe's got-
Has to be some differentiation made too, when you have a mixture of uses in the same building.
Exactly. You know, I mean, yeah, so, you know, maybe we go to a straight commercial and just look at it, you know, more on an impervious area and eliminate the multifamily and let them all pay the same amount.
That's one option, yes.
Joe's got a question, one last question on stormwater here for you, Walter.
I promised him.
I don't get to finish.
You did not get the last one.
Jimmy always gets the last one. You were finished, yes.
Marie pointed out that what happens is after the rates are set, they come back and it's trued up, they balance out. So if we set a $48 rate and then they come back and they're at a $60 rate, are they assessing us for that balance at $60 or we're only collecting on the 48?
No, they're going to assess us on actual costs. We're going to ask them for the actual cost of the repairs and maintenance that they performed.
So if their costs are above the $48, we'll be on the hook?
Yeah, exactly. And that's a good point. I mean, you know, they, we're hoping that they haven't performed any work that exceeds the anticipation collection. Because that will be another discussion if that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter, yes.
Okay.
Joanne, do you have anything else to add to that?
Hey, Richard, I'm pleading jet lag.
Okay. The last item on your regularly scheduled council meeting is under New Business, and that is the ordinance to amend chapter four, the alcohol beverages. Further on your agenda is the executive session, and I would ask if it would be permissible that we could move the executive session at the end of Old Business.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Burkhold will be here to make a presentation on that item.
Okay. Any other business?
So you want, you want an executive session before we take up the ordinance and then Mr. Burkhold will still present at the time we take up the ordinance?
Correct. Yes, thank you. If I could, if we could move back to finish the work session agenda, because we do have other business.
Oh, yeah.
The sanitation for the RFP update, Ms. Klein.
Okay.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it.
You can proceed. I was messing with you. I'm sorry.
All right. I don't have a whole lot to add. I don't know if you remember, but tonight was the night we originally were going to award this contract. Since then, DeKalb County's kind of changed, I think, our approach. So what we have here is just the rates that were bid. We had, we actually had four people come to the meeting, but we deemed one of the responses non-responsive, so we're not going to consider that. But these pages are what we asked them to bid on. And the funny thing is, no one is like lowest on everything or highest on everything. but tonight was the night we originally were going to award this contract. Since then, DeKalb County's kind of changed, I think, our approach. So what, what we have here is just the rates that were bid, we had, we actually had four people come to the meeting, but we deemed one of the responses non-responsive, so we're not going to consider that. But these pages are what we asked them to bid on, and the funny thing is, no one is like lowest on everything or highest on everything, so we, I guess we just need some direction what we want to do now. If residential is the focus, or, you know, we also asked them to, to bid on commercial, on rollaway dumpsters and all that stuff. Not sure where, where we're going from here. We notified the respondents that we were going to delay the award at least till the August meeting, and also put that notice on our website.
Some of the options that you have in looking at this, because you don't, as Bonnie has said, we don't have one firm that provides the lowest cost all the way across the board. You could invite one of the vendors in and allow us to further qualify.
In fact, all three of the, these respondents would like to come in, they've all approached us, they'd love to make a pitch.
So you could do that, I mean, we could, on a staff level, could perform that, and then make a recommendation, and then they could make a presentation before you all, if, if you're wanting to move further in this.
Okay, well, on the previous meeting, an offer was extended to me to, to participate in this with you, and I will take you up on that. Number one, number two, the two other variables that need to be factored into this would be on the rebate and on the recyclable refund. That's not assessed here?
No.
And that's definitely part of the conversation, and I think what we need to do as a group is assess a weighted amount for each of these categories, so that we can have a fair approach to how we, we come up with this, and that assessment's going to be done not only on what we're doing immediately, but what the long-term impact will be of that pricing, should it, shouldn't, when it go, it goes citywide.
When you refer to rebate, Mr. Gebbia, you mean franchise fee?
Well, there's two, there's the rebate on the, the, I, yes, thank you, rebate, the franchise fee, but the second was opportunity for neighborhood participation in recycling.
Right, incentive, incentivizing, yep.
Yes, thank you, Marie.
All right, thank you.
I, I would, I would certainly like to see a presentation from all of them, I mean, I, I don't completely understand what I'm looking at here, and I would really like to see the details and fleshed out a little bit more.
I would like, that question was like, what will you take? You take everything, kind of, DeKalb kind of takes everything?
People own, you can put the couch out on the street, people, and they, DeKalb will take it.
And, you know, what's their additional service, I mean, you know, what's their yard waste, do they have a limit on, on bags, you know, for yard waste? The other thing I'd like to see is, for these three contenders, I'd like to see, have them, I want to see a five-year history for at least five municipalities that they're, that they're servicing, what's their rate, what's, what's been their rate structure for a period of time, to see how, how true they've been to holding their rates, you know, DeKalb has, has held their rates for going on eight years now, prior to that, it was a five-year lit, I'd like to see a history of their rate structure for similar service delivery in other municipalities.
We did, we did ask them for references, so we do have some cities we could...
I'd like them to provide, you know, specifics on, on what their rate structure is for...
I actually want to go to the city and see what they really are charging.
That, that's true, yeah, so, you know, I'd be very curious to see, you know, this is a, an interesting teaser, but let's see what the reality is for other municipalities.
Fortunately, just about every one of these companies is doing business in neighborhoods close to us, so our ability to do due diligence is going to be...
Well, yeah, we, we do our own, but ask them, those are the kind of things we want to hear from them, what's your five-year history, what cities do you work for, what are your rates you charge, and then we kind of verify it independently, and see what they take, that's the catch-all question.
Would you like for us to at least do that qualification along with Mr. Gebbia, and then report back, and then see if you're still willing to hear a presentation?
And then, you know, then the other thing I want to, I want to understand is, is what DeKalb sanitation is providing in addition to garbage pickup, you know, we've heard that they mow right-ofways, they mow floodplain properties, they mow other parcels, you know, let's get a complete list of what services they're providing.
In Brookhaven.
In Brookhaven.
Like mowing grass?
I'm sorry?
Nothing?
Like mowing, mowing grass?
I understand that...
If it's on the list, yes.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think we put that in our...
Yes.
But DeKalb County.
Yeah, DeKalb County, you know, let's, for instance, I understand that they're maintaining some floodplain properties in, in Drew Valley on a regular basis, so it's just simply defaulted to sanitation, because they've got mower crews, and so, but anyway, I'd like to understand, you know...
Look at their full scope.
Yeah, what their full scope is, in addition to just picking up trash.
Richard, do you have a comment about that? Bonnie, do you mind?
My understanding right now, as far as what they're taking care of right now, is they are still maintaining the DeKalb County-owned properties, which are the parks, obviously, and the floodplain lots that DeKalb County owns, that the city does not opt out to, but the right-ofway is all, is either the property owners that are fronting it, or those areas that aren't ours, City Brookhaven.
So, Richard, if we go this route, does DeKalb County still have responsibility for the floodplain maintenance?
They will, as long as they own the property.
Right.
But if the City of Brookhaven takes over, I, with the stormwater utility, we would someday take over all those properties, and they would become the city's responsibility to maintain those.
You said they did work at parks?
They do, well, right now, they're responsible for maintaining all the parks, and all the frontages along the parks.
As far as like the right-ofway, the grass and all that?
The grass, yes.
In addition to the, to the trash taken out of it?
Yes, yes.
Do, do they get paid out of the Parks Department for maintaining that right-ofway, or is that, do we know that?
I don't know if, you know, I'm not sure how, whether, within the Parks Department, whether they have a Parks mowers, or whether sanitation is mowing the parks. That's between the Parks Department and the sanitation department, I believe.
Well, we'd have to know that if that...
Can you find that out?
I can find, we can find that out.
That's the point, I, I guess, let's just find out what sanitation is doing in addition to just picking up yard waste, or, or, excuse me, trash and yard waste for the residential.
Although the expectation, at least with the floodplain lots, when eventually those get transferred to the City of Brookhaven, which someday they will, the city will be responsible for taking care of those lots. They're taking care of them now because they are DeKalb County property.
What, would we be taking them over, under what agency?
Under the stormwater utility.
So the stormwater utility agency, they own, I mean, DeKalb owns them, but the, they're, they're, will they be owned by the stormwater utility?
They will be owned, they'll be owned by the city.
They'll be owned by the city.
Microphone.
They'll be owned by the city, but we will utilize our stormwater utility funds to maintain some of those properties.
What I want to know is, what, who, what department owns them from DeKalb County?
DeKalb County departments don't own property, DeKalb County owns property, so...
So under what?
Whatever department maintains them, the ownership is DeKalb.
When does that happen, do we have to put the request in to initiate that, or does it come by default when we take over stormwater?
No, at some point, we would negotiate for them to hand over those properties in Dunwoody, they've only recently done that on many of the properties.
Do we want them?
Yeah.
That's a long conversation, it, it, it depends.
It doesn't come under parks, and it's, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what department...
That's not floodplain properties, not floodplain properties, those are individual stormwater maintenance properties that DeKalb County owns and maintains, that they're not parks per se.
Yeah, the ma- majority of, majority of them were bought under, under FEMA grants, and so there may be some, there may be some, some restrictions on them for, for use of development.
The distinction between those is, and I believe, Lenny, correct me if I'm wrong, because they're floodplain properties, they transfer at no charge to the city, whereas parks have that $100 per acre charge. So we don't want them as park, we don't want them transferred as parks, we want them transferred as stormwater properties. Well, there's other issues to come about, if you want to take on those properties as parks, that you don't want to do that.
Right.
But they will transfer them as just maintenance, stormwater maintenance properties.
So, Lenny, when Dunwoody did this, what was the time period between taking over the...
We took over stormwater, what, about three and a half years ago? And then... Took stormwater utility over in the first year. Yeah, about four years ago, we just, last October, acquired a bunch of stormwater properties.
Okay.
And it, it took time to do, inventory took time to figure out what properties they own, it took time for us to get our bearings together, to be able to maintain those properties, and to negotiate transfer, because things take a long time to go through the commission to do that, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Bonnie, do you have anything else, or are you done? All right.
All right, for now.
Staff retreat.
Yes.
Mayor, council, and staff retreat.
Correct, that is going to be this Thursday.
We're going to Hawaii.
In your mind.
Put that up tonight, we're, council going to Hawaii for a retreat.
Everyone wear your Hawaiian shirts, in your mind.
Right, right.
Actually, you're going to the Holiday Inn in Brookhaven, at 285 and Shandley-Dunwoody Road.
Free of charge.
It's close. Yes, they're not charging us for the room rate, we are being charged for lunch.
Will we be smarter because we're having to retreat to the Holiday Inn?
It's not the Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah, it's not.
Moving right along.
That is this Thursday, July the 11th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., and we will end at 4:00 p.m. This is part one, the first half of the retreat will focus on open records, the charter, you know, talking about First Amendment rights, we'll be going over all of that, then we'll break for lunch, and then that afternoon, we will concentrate totally on communications, and basically how we effectively communicate with our public. So there are a number of exercises that we're going to include, as well as review, you will also be selecting your logo, you'll have a presentation on where we're headed with the website, all information that will enable us to better communicate with, with the public. So be prepared to look at choices for your logo and come away with a decision, so we're very excited about that. Megan and Dana are working on preparing all of that, the consultant that has been assisting us on the logo will also be present, so that we can have any kind of feedback that you need immediately to perhaps any questions you have, but the goal is to come away that day with a logo that you're going to be very proud of, and a website you're going to be excited to see being built, effective communication skills, and this will all lead into getting us prepared for our phase two of the retreat, whereby you'll hear from the department heads, and we'll be looking at immediate needs, as well as three-year and five-year goals for those departments, and also prep session on getting you ready for the budget for 2014.
All right, so what's, what's the date and the time for the first one?
The date is July the 11th.
That's this Thursday?
This Thursday, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m.
Do we have a tentative date for part two?
Not yet, I, I want to get with all of your schedules, to be sure everybody is in town, that's why we're not doing the second part, because it's important that all of you are here.
Okay.
And it's, it's tough, next year, we'll make sure that your retreat is in the spring.
In Hawaii, right?
In Hawaii. Everyone wear your Hawaiian shirts.
All right. Sounds like fun, seven hours of fun.
It's going to be a full day, it's Megan and her team are working...
Are there fun activities, I mean, is there anything fun planned at all?
Yeah, we're going to learn how to use Twitter, I'm excited about that.
All right.
Absolutely.
Is there a t-shirt, I survived the retreat, the Holiday Inn?
No.
No.
That's after part two.
I, I will say, your, your local hotel is very excited that we're having the retreat there, and they're, they're making themselves ready.
I was told today by somebody that that Holiday Inn is the oldest hotel in Brookhaven.
Well, I don't know, that could be.
Or that there's been a Holiday Inn there for a while, I don't know, the, the exact building now is sort of newer, but I think there's been a Holiday Inn there.
If time permits, I, I think that they're going to want to tour you through it, Rebecca and I went through, they have completely revamped, I think it's their third floor, and they have a model room of, of what all the floor, all the rooms are going to look like, but they have a nice restaurant right there on the property, and great meeting rooms, which will enable not only for us to be there, but also the public that would like to join us, so that the room is sufficient in size. So it's, it's, it's a good place to meet, and it's right in your hometown.
And in District One, thank you, we are so happy to host you.
Next year will be at Jim's house.
And that's, that's all that we have, I, I have no announcements.